This is me straight to.
Is Mert replacing Leo?
Are we live?
So Leo could go to the meeting.
Ah-huh.
Presentation.
We live?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Okay. One minute.
This looks like a big team.
Is there agendas?
Oh. Give it so we know where we are. We're not headed over here.
Anybody else want?
Okay, you if you'll. Thank you.
All right, being seven o'clock, I'm going to call the meeting of the Dunbar Board of Selectmen for Thursday, the nineteenth of the war. Time is seven P.M. Two selectmen are present. One's on vacation. And the secretary is also out this week, so we have the tape recorder and the town minister to hear an assist. Recording is Mert Mann. Thank you, Mert, for being here. Okay, that's how to go through the old business form. It's just me and you, so we'll make it work.
Okay, so I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes of October twelfth, the regular selectmen meeting.
Okay. I second that. And discussion. There are a few small changes to there.
Yeah, just amended that.
Yeah, amended, yeah. And I added some, a few items that were, one sentence was left off and we added that. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go ahead and sign it.
Get your corrections.
Gets corrected.
I'm glad you closed the page.
I have a tab there for you.
And let's see. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the October twelfth, non-publics meeting. Seal.
I second that. And there were no corrections to that.
Yeah, there was just, there was one slight correction, so I'll say it's amended again.
Okay.
There was just a, where there was just a major adjustment. Are you gonna, are you gonna say?
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's difficult when it's true.
So.
Which is just all looking.
No, overlook's coming up. No, you're gonna have to bring that back. You have to seal it.
That's right.
Okay, we're gonna go immediately to the agenda since we have a public hearing at seven fifteen. We have time to do the cemetery trustee issue.
Can we do a public comment first?
Uh, yes, we can.
It don't matter to me, I just.
But we have, no, nothing from Mert? Public comment?
Of course.
Ah, yes, sir.
Don Marson, Mert's for your drive. Uh, just wanna let everybody know that beginning November first, we'll have tickets for the chili supper for Reese across Dunbarden available here at the town office for sale. And I'll also be at the transfer station on Saturdays.
You may want to coordinate with Lean as far as, maybe make, put on Hot Topics later in the, later in this month.
Yep, what now?
Put it on Hot Topics on the website.
Okay.
Who they can be purchased from.
Oh, all right, sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, John. Brian?
Yeah, Brian Blake. I remember reading the minutes and the videos and such like that, you guys been working on the personnel plan?
Yes.
Is there any plan to take and have that be vetted out through the public comment like they had in the past? Or are you guys just gonna, just out of curiosity?
Um, basically, there weren't, there weren't many changes. But the thing is, basically, we cleaned it up and republished it. So it's been approved already, a few changes.
Is it on the website with the approvals? Do they?
I don't believe it's on the website. But the thing, all effective.
I think it was sectioned for policies and procedures.
All effective employees were given copies of the, of the, of the changes.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
But it would be nice for the public also, because it's public document.
Yeah, it's available for anyone who wants to look at it. But the thing is, we didn't really put, digitize it to put on the website. There's no problem why we couldn't.
I know there's been, there's a section for policy procedures. I know passport is, I think it was the intent was to have all policy procedures digitized and put up there so the public could take and view them at their leisure.
They can do that.
If memory serves.
I have no problem with that. It's not a secret of documents.
Exactly, they're just all public documents, so.
Exactly.
Just say if you guys have any, dig them out and photocopy them and take your time if they can find one online.
Lean, we can take that in fraction. Yeah, good suggestion, thank you. Ken, anything for the public? Okay, close the public comment. Now we're gonna, cemetery, cemetery trustees, come on up if you want. I'll, I'll, I'll start this and I'll spoil the compliment me on our proposals. We had this building painted and a lot of the clapboard, wooden clapboard on lower to the ground was rotted out due to more than likely splash, water splashing up from the ground and causing water damage to the clapboard. And we wanna basically refresh the drip line out, the building to the edge of the drip line of the building so when the water comes down, it doesn't hit plant material where it can grow up. It hits basically stone. And that may require, um, from the, from the building to the drip line out, removal of, removal of some of the existing vegetation and some of the stone. There's some stone in there also, there's some old stone.
There was.
Yeah, there is, I was out there this afternoon. And then when I saw some of the three eighths inch stone that's there now, there's just a little bit. So I took my foot and moved it. And you know, you've got vegetation that's growing up over the three eighths stone. Actually, the three eighths is so, moves a lot more with any kind of organic material. So the grass grows. So I think if we could get that refreshed with larger stone, three quarter inch, inch and a half stone for that drip edge, that might suffice that, but we need your permission to be able to do that.
So, um, I know by laws and stuff like that, you can't excavate there without our permission or coordination and such like that. But, I mean, where it's already been put down, I think that's a great word for that. I personally have a problem with that, do you?
No.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna like to do it this fall before, so.
How far out are you gonna go?
Drip line.
Well, 'cause if you get to the drip line, it still hits the grass. So do you want to go a little bit beyond that or just?
You may want to, because.
You got a good running.
That's what'll happen is you'll see that little bit of a trench there from the water dripping. You should actually go beyond it. Hopefully, maybe six inches, you know?
Are you gonna do the edge? What's that? Some type of edging between the grass and the rock?
That's what I'm trying to run.
Well, definitely landscape fabric underneath it.
Because that'd hold the rock and otherwise it'll go out onto the grass.
Right. Because I think it makes some plastic, you could actually nail this stuff right in there and make a line.
I would be real honest, if you go to my house and you go to where my shed is, I got crushed stone around everything to protect it and I don't have any.
You just didn't wanna mow it.
Border between it and I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I think we put an edge to the potential of a mower damage.
Yeah, I've got the, the real tall hard rubber going around my drip line and that that I had installed when I did the yard.
Again, we, we don't wanna go crazy with the, you know, driving up cost either.
Well, that's true.
We were, we just figured that we'd go to the well and see how, how bad you guys want it. Well, here's, here's, here's how bad, since you're going to the well, we were wondering if you have any money in your budget so we could share the cost.
Really?
Any money we have will go to the cremains garden out here.
Well, you have any estimates or?
Uh, we'll work on it.
Because I know our current maintenance guy, who's gonna be doing the project down on the pages, he may be interested in doing it.
In fact, that information has been passed on to the town ministry.
Uh, do you need his contact information? You should have it.
But we're gonna get a couple estimates.
Absolutely.
Can you send us a, a letter outlining what you want to do and, you know?
For the record.
Sign a can, that way we've got correspondence.
M.O.U. type of thing?
Yeah. Can do.
Yeah, or you're just outlining what we've discussed tonight and we can sign off on it. So, yeah, because we.
For the record, so if anyone questions what we did, you gotta give credit.
Okay. We cover our respective touches.
In essence, all it does is preserve that, that building on the outside so you're not getting any rot on the bottom or anything, you know?
And you just gotta make sure whoever does the work, whether it's our vendor, which he would know because he's working in cemeteries for quite a while, or someone else that you choose, excavation is to a minimum, you know, as long as they go deep as they absolutely have to. I mean, you know, just the vegetation, a little bit of topsoil because.
Absolutely.
I mean, you never know, the last thing you don't want them to do is pull up someone's collarbone or something, you know, you never know.
Bob, you weren't gonna talk about that other item, were you?
Other item?
Bones.
What bones, Lee?
No, 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 no.
Usually these rocks. Okay. No, the thing is, but the rocks, the rock, missing the rocks need to be actually moved out of there and put in landscape and fabric because there's a lot of silt in there which helps vegetation grow.
And if, I mean, if you're okay with it, Don, uh, over in the far corner, we have a section for the spare dirt and other crap that comes out of the cemetery graves.
Yes.
That don't go back in. If they wanna take and, instead of hauling away and costing more money, you know, they can deposit it over there.
Okay.
If you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Because it's just where you put all the grass copings and stuff. Could save some money from transporting that stuff out of here.
Well, we'll drop the letter and get it to the, to you guys. And it'll probably be a couple weeks before we get that, all the bids and make a determination which we wanna go, but, uh.
All right, well, we have our meeting on the seventh, so.
Oh, yeah, we should have it by the seventh.
Uh-huh.
Did the check go up for, for Mr. St. Laurent?
It was just eight last week, right? So I'll make sure it gets mailed out tomorrow.
Beautiful, thank you.
Okay.
So that way you can get on that Davis project and your head done before snow flies.
Gentlemen, I say thank you. And hopefully it wasn't, it wasn't easier than I thought it was gonna be. But we need to do one nation.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Yep.
Gentlemen, tomorrow. Hey, Woody.
So the action of the day is we gotta prepare a letter and, uh.
I'll send you for the next one.
No, I don't, you know.
There's some planning board too, I suppose. Makes sense.
Okay, the next item up is, um, the planning board is basically brought up a, uh.
We're a few, a few minutes early.
I know, but it's, I'm just gonna, part of the battlefield.
Okay.
We have a public hearing on Overlook Drive which will start at seven fifteen. But it was approved by the planning board last night for, for recommendation to us to, to make it.
Can you, do you want the notes of decision?
Yes.
You left? I did not. That way we can just familiarize ourselves where you were there.
Friends. Sir, you're getting to be commonplace here.
I am.
I guess that's okay.
It's a nice place.
In fact, I'm looking around the room, the same, a good portion of people who were there last night are here today.
I know the same.
Yeah.
There shouldn't be a lot of questions on it.
Exactly. At least not from the public, because they were there. Have you been, have, has sales, have the homes been selling? That's my question.
He's, uh.
Yes.
Good.
A lot of, a lot of activity.
Good. Good to hear.
Probably, I'd say forty percent confirmed sales.
And must bring a smile to everybody.
Yeah, and it's, it doesn't move as fast as the southern tier, but it's moving.
Good. That's the map.
That's the map.
Yeah. Um, there's gonna be another map made. This is the most up-to-date map to date. And they're gonna create another map at the conclusion of the process and it's gonna be filed as it was built as is. Correct.
As yours as built.
As built.
Showing everything.
Yes. Uh, but this does show some of the improvements they've made, such as the sister and.
Right.
And so the bond. All right. I think it's close enough that we can start this. Um, so we have a, uh, a recommendation from the planning board to accept the remaining of the road and the portion that's, that's basically been considered, um, completed. And I'll make the motion, Bob. And the thing is, we can discuss it now before we make the motion, but.
So you're opening a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted that to be stated.
Yep. And I'm gonna basically open it up to the public first for comment. What we wanna do is proceduralize, help you out here.
Well, are you making a motion?
I can remake the motion.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right. But we did, we're in the public hearing now.
Oh, no.
All right.
I asked you to make the motion and we're going to public hearing.
All right, I'll make a motion, we go into a public hearing. Regarding overlook, overlook estate subdivision and to accept, potentially accept the remaining of the, of the roadway.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is now open. All right, so as I said, we have a recommendation from the, uh, the planning board that this be approved. I have a motion in front of me and, uh, the road agent has basically concurred with what has been presented also, he is also a member of the planning board. And I'm gonna ask Ken, if you have any comments for the selectmen regarding this, I have your letter, thank you.
Nothing.
Okay, further, okay.
So you're making a motion.
I can read, yeah, I can, I'm gonna read the motion.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, and I'm gonna make the motion here. It's basically, uh, make a motion to acknowledge the status of construction of Overlook Drive as shown on subdivision plans approved September twenty first, twenty sixteen by the Dunbarden Planning Board. Tax map fourteen, block zero one, block two, referred to as Overlook Estates as filed at the Merrimack County Registry of Deeds, September twenty sixth, twenty sixteen. And that portion be considered substantially complete for the purposes of public travel and associated uses including, but not limited to, issuance of occupancy permits, public access to the deed at town conservation parcels, et cetera. And refer to this recommendation to the Dun, and refer this recommendation to the Dunbaron Board of Selectmen for acceptance of the town class, town class five roadway. So I'll second the motion, second motion. Now we'll open up a discussion and this is gonna open up for the public too. Any comments or concerns on this proposal before the board of selectmen in this acceptance of the remaining portion of the roadway and overlook estates?
I, I just had one question, just wanna make sure, because I didn't, your motion didn't mention about any type of, I know it says substantially complete and all that, but.
Right.
Who's overseeing the punch list items and such like that? Your motion didn't speak to.
The thing is, once it, as I understand it, once we accept the road, it becomes under the auspices of, the supervision of the board of selectmen, which our agent is the road agent.
I kinda know that, it's just more for these people that are gonna be watching the video.
Very good. Yeah, I hope I got it right. The thing is, I, I learned this last night at the planning board, so this is new to me. So, uh, but the thing is, the responsibility falls with the board of selectmen as of today if we accept this. And it goes to our agent, the road agent, will be our man of the, on the job, making sure that things are accomplished. And to help enforce this, the company, your company, sir, has put up a bond, a cash bond, and that's the carrot stick for them to complete as stipulated the plans. And they wanna do the right thing too, so I'm, that's just a incentive.
It was just more of a FYI for them.
Yes, and that's why I'm going that a little bit further, so everyone knows what's going on. And Ken, tell me if I'm wrong anywhere.
Yeah, you're doing a good job.
Okay. Trying to put it in very simple language for the, for our voters. Okay, and for me. Okay, any hearing, no further discussion, Bob?
Aye.
All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Sure.
Good.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is my, uh, my second roadway I'm involved. You was, your, the first half was your first half this year.
Oh, so this is the second.
This is the second half.
I feel like you should stay here.
You gotta change the name of the road to the Kaminsky Ave.
Swayze Road would be better.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, uh, just for the record, the road is now been accepted as a class five and it comes under our supervision, Bob. And as I said, the, uh, the bond out there, there's a punch list, if you, there's a punch list we have a copy of. There's still work to be done. And the thing is, there'll be, there'll be work ongoing as they complete. And the bond is the, uh, the carrot stick to ensure they complete. And I also, for the record, uh, from the planning board side, uh, the bond is excessive right now. And what will probably happen, they may come in and ask for a reduction in the bond, which is most appropriate. And we can act upon, uh, recommendations from the planning board as such. Okay, moving on. General town business. It's the inbox. Okay, just for the, it's an FYI, Bob. It was, we had the Dunbarden, um, school board, we have a public, uh, meeting on the thirtieth. There was, uh, actually a mailing went out today.
Right, just saw that.
And, uh, Lean has posted this on, um, Hot Topics so the public can be aware of it. Yeah. Okay, we have a, uh, some correspondence from Primex. That's basically the, uh, the more renewals, the work and, the workers compensation renewal, property liability renewal and unemployment compensation renewals. These are FYIs, but things with the bottom line, at least I, as I read, it was just, uh, price increases going up.
Not much, but there was a little.
A little bit. And I think it's to be expected because.
Yeah, we are currently under a multi-year contract so that we're guaranteed not to exceed a certain percentage increase. And these increases are well below that.
But that, well, in the budget process, we'll have that information. Okay, we have a, a long overdue quote, quote on the, on the quilted, on the quilt case that we're considering. As you recall from last meeting, we decided to defer a decision until Dave had an opportunity to see the location we selected the library.
I thought we, we resolved that with a quicker fix.
I don't know that it's been, I think we tabled this decision until Dave could go look at the library. And I don't think this happened yet. And then this suddenly showed up, so I, I put it through the box for information.
I, I don't think there's any action needed to take on that now. We have a, just, Lean has already posted, this is a national prescription, information, FYI, national prescription, uh, drug takeback.
Right, take back, uh, the police or?
Right. And that's on Hot Topics. Lean. The drug takeback?
Yes, it's already up there.
Okay. Yeah, this was a, uh, this is from, um, Primex. This is referencing a terminated employee, this is a decision was made.
Yeah, that's a pro employment security, that's.
Right.
Decision, yeah.
Okay. Ken, just for the record, I'm in, I'm in receipt of a report from Northeast Engineering.
Surprised.
Northeast Engineering.
Yeah.
Uh, this is, uh, this is for.
North Point.
You say again?
No, no.
North Point.
No, this one's northeast.
Oh, northeast, excuse me.
This occurred very quickly and within a week, we have, how many days do we have to report after the inspection?
Three days.
Okay, this is Perpetory Pond Road.
Oh, of that, yeah, yeah.
And so this is, uh, good news, this is an FYI, this is.
I know it.
A little quicker than.
Well, we're at report and, uh, and, uh, everything was done as we stipulated at the last meeting in the sense that, um, he provided a quote and we provided him the, the rules and regulations concerning our roadways for acceptance. He reviewed those and then came back to us, gave an estimate, made an inspection already and will continue to monitor road progress.
I thought it was a big change from when it used to just be a cow path going down to a pond.
Yeah, but still is a cow path to the pond once you hit a certain point.
Oh, yeah, but before that, you used to park in, I mean, Odette's Field.
Yep.
And walk down, it was, there was no road, you know, before. The fishing game came in, in the sixties.
Yeah, that's when the first houses went in, yeah.
I thought the report was pretty complete. Ken, you want to take a look at that?
Oh, thank you.
Please, I invite you to, because we may use them for other projects in the future.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
But you have an engineer set of eyes.
Yeah.
So you can scrutinize it better than I can. Okay, we have, uh, just an memorandum. Uh, this is, the police chief is gonna be on vacation and we have interim police chief wherever he's gone. Okay. Uh, we have a, uh, final invoice from Tuttle Painting. I think Bob made an inspection today, you wanna comment on the inspection? There's a few shortcomings that need to be addressed.
Well, I think you're gonna contact Tuttle, right?
I left the message and I've left some detail there in case he comes in tomorrow because I don't want it, I'd release until it's taken care of.
Right, and I was actually gonna mention that tonight is, until he does that corner, I was showing you around.
Everything around the front, underneath these windows and then on the, the side of the bucket.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm gonna hold, check in.
Yeah.
Understood. Okay. Health Trust also sent us an email today. This is just a teaser, but the thing is, health, the current plans we have now, the projected rates are going down six point two percent. And, uh, the rest of the plans which we were entertaining, when she talked about the different plans, those rates will be forthcoming next week.
With the package.
And once we get those rates, we can actually have a substantial discussion of which way we're gonna go. It's unbelievable, health, health insurance went down.
Yeah, I was wondering if you read that, right?
Yeah, I know, it was a minus.
Yeah, six point two percent.
Okay, I have, just for the record, these are some, uh, concern in the, um, transfer station, these are, Woody, we have some, copied the reports that your former Roger Rice provided to you. He copied us on it too.
Correct.
Yep. All right, lastly, and these are, I'm in front of me, two grants that the police department is gonna be pursuing. One is an enforcement grant concerning, um, they get some extra dollars if they put up, use radar and do some speed monitoring. And it's basically around six thousand dollars returned to the town if they set up on certain dates, certain police, they have certain locations in town, they make recommendations, but they, we set up a speed traps, but, uh, speed radar control.
Enforcement.
Enforcement, thank you. And so that if by planning, we get a few, a little money there. And then there's also another equipment grant he's applying for.
Is it coming out of the residence pocket?
Well, indirectly to the state. And so the thing is, we have to sign these in order for him to pursue these. And.
What kind of equipment?
Uh, he's looking for, um, uh, I, like an iPad type, uh, like a lap, not a laptop, but just an iPad type thing where they can do police reports on when they're in field and a little bit easier to use.
That had all to do with the dispatching and stuff from the past.
It's, it allows for a little faster accessibility of information.
Absolutely.
I think, yeah, you were, I think you brought this up earlier in the year when you were on the board.
Yes, yeah, we were all four at the time. Every board so far has been four because it, it was always gonna be a.
The, the other one for the enforcement grants, I was asking about that.
Yeah.
But the town just still does not give any money for speeding tickets.
No, they don't.
But, uh, I also found out one other thing today. Prosecution, we don't have a prosecutor in town, so we have to contract.
Yeah. Yeah, my county.
With, right, for a prosecutor to prosecute our cases. The good news is, he can, chief explained to me, we get checks back to the town, which offsets the cost of that.
Yep.
I'll say the county attorney lives right in town, we should give him a discount.
Yeah, exactly. Bob, I think we had general consensus that we're accepting that the grants. I don't think we need a motion, but we're just, there's no, we have, we're just applying. There's a couple tabs there, I think are actually required signatures too.
Also, you just take your assholes.
Leslie.
Josh, you're on.
This is, could be done in front of notaries, so this one here.
Take care of that.
Okay.
It's the same thing with this one. It's going to break the smaller ones.
I'm sorry.
I left you room to put your name in this election. I think that's the only one.
Ready for the prompt two?
Yeah, yeah.
Right as crap.
Hey, Lena? Ask you a question, all those guys assigned this stuff. I got on my thumb drive, I have a picture of the page of cemetery section. If I can give that to you, you know, offload to your computer, so you can print it on the plotter, so it's bigger, so we
For wire, yeah.
Because before our meeting, because we have to get that stuff together for the mapping folks.
Yeah.
Transfer some information onto it.
Okay. You can give it to me tonight?
Yeah, they have my thumb drive, in my pocket. They don't leave home without it.
Through pocket or the thumb drive?
The thumb drive.
Okay.
The pocket's a good story. You can go where it wants.
Speaking of grants, that's coming from the other grant we put, she put in, girl this year for personnel.
As far as hitting the bank, nothing yet.
Nothing yet, okay.
John would like to see it sooner than later. He's ready.
I wanna read for Johns.
John, isn't that what you asked?
For, the, the, the
Wait.
No, the other one too. John, Johns is, he always
Chief. The chief of the
Was a personnel issue.
That, you know, to fund an additional personnel.
Oh, that I haven't heard, I guess the chief said he would be talking about Oh, okay, okay.
All right, this one?
Yeah.
Now we're on the board.
It's okay. Make, make people look at it twice. Almost up.
That one has to be notarized as well, when you sign the report?
It does.
And you signed it?
I both signed it.
Okay.
So it's one, those are in one section for notary, in the very front page, the second one does not require notary. So I, I wouldn't mind putting a notary on the back page. Ken, just let you know, we have the six candidates now.
That's good.
And what we, we're talking about procedures tonight, what we'll do, we'll invite the stakeholders to a workshop session for potential, where we can sit down. If, if, it's gonna be kinda hard to get six people together, excuse me, five people together. If one doesn't, we're gonna have to prepare packets of all the resumes ahead of time, confidential packets. That way, if you can't attend, you can at least review them.
Over, keep
And number them, and maybe ask, if you have any concerns or questions, just jot them down, so we can, we can ask for them.
You ought to actually do that in advance and then go to the meeting.
Oh, wait, absolutely, that's gonna be done in advance.
We should do it in advance, I mean, read them
Packages.
In total.
Right, that, all packets will be delivered to you before, prior to the meeting, in more than an hour. So it can be digested.
Like I said, that's nothing compared to, what, we have one fifty-five or something?
Ninety-seven.
Excuse, I'm talking about
Fine, yeah, we weeded out
They were three.
We weeded out half of them.
There were three of them, I think, so
But six is reasonable, the cutoff date is on the twenty-seventh.
It's my birthday.
Well, it does say it will be, it will be open until filled, but just that the review process would begin then. So I'll have those ready by the end of next week.
So anticipate probably shortly thereafter, the twenty-seventh, we'll try to come up with a proposal date.
Our search is mostly cost free to some degree?
The one that was offered through the paper was advertised seven days in the paper, but thirty days free advertising on, on, on the web, I guess they do that. So it's cut down on the cost, but that ad had to be small enough, because the regular ad would have been like over seven hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And it's also being advertised on the municipal
Yeah, and
Well, that's the one I'm, I'm talking about.
Right, yeah, that one's it.
I like them, I like them, I actually read the paper to the point where that ad is actually effective.
I, I was pleasantly surprised, I see six.
Hmm, absolutely.
I mean
Well, if the economy wasn't crap, where you'd probably have ninety-seven again.
Be different.
Yeah, that's true.
Actually, that was a long time ago, a while ago, but yeah, but it's during that period.
This needs some organization.
You get a lot of shotguns.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment again.
Brian Blake, working the bridge.
Yes.
Where are we at with that?
I'm glad you asked. The thing is, um
Just wanted to hear.
What bridge, you have, for the sake of the picture there, I think that we need to establish what bridge this man's talking about.
Well, the bolt was, the bolt had just collapsed.
The bolt went collapsed, it was, in fact, the entire paper today was about bridges, I thought, and so, but we can talk about that, I'm gonna have Bob, Bob, help me out here.
We were, we were anticipating sometime between the end of August, but then it came about that it would be maybe this month, October. And they finished making a precast, so that's sitting over in the yard now, I would imagine.
Our yard or theirs?
Uh, their yard. The problem being that the road agent discovered that it's beyond his ability to put that in, so now we've gotta get a bid for the bridge in. The, the footing for the columns, they'll hold the bridge up, there's three different ones, need to be, you need to have someone come in and drive sheathing in
Yep.
So that they can put that on a base that's stable, that isn't affected by water movement.
You do realize the sheathing companies are going slim.
So that's, yeah, that's forty grand.
It's below the water table.
Correct.
Work that needs to be done.
Correct, right.
And if you hit wedge, you're gonna have to excavate below to get the sheathing in, because you're not really upon it to wedge.
So
Get a bigger poke.
So what happened is, even, even with, even with that, someone coming in doing the sheathing, the amount of dirt that has to be moved, his machine isn't large enough, you know, to perform that work, so that's gotta go out to bid.
So we'll guess another warrant article in front of the voters for much, to pay for this?
The sad part is, we got eighty-three thousand from the state, in addition to the money that we usually get.
Yeah, you can. Roads and bridges.
Yes, but it's supposed to be for a project that was not on the books, already in progress, this was, read the law. It's supposed to be for new projects, non-existing ones. So like Grapevine, you could use it for that, you can't use it for this bridge. Checked a lot, because that's, that was one of the big points of contention, is for new, new projects, bridges and roads.
But the thing is, your question, to answer your question, we'll have to go in front of the voters, that's a possibility.
And, you know, looking at what it's probably gonna cost, I think he's way, you know, I think we brought that up in the past that it was gonna be underfunded, and it's well underfunded, I, I believe, you know.
It does, yeah.
I just
The forty grand's just a drop in the bucket, I think you're gonna be closer to two hundred thousand.
Yeah, sounds well right.
Just, I was just reading the paper today about the bowl bridge, the one that collapsed, they're estimating just for that bridge, which is a, it's a good-sized road, eight hundred thousand.
Yep.
And so it's, the bridges are not cheap.
Yeah, not, not, they're gonna expand it when they put water and when it end up blow away.
But the thing is, it's, it's not the bridge it's cost, it's the installation now, and it has to be done overseeing probably by an engineer.
Correct.
Most of the, most of the bridge contracts, it's how they're engineering it up.
So it's a work in progress as far as determining cost. Jeff's working with Lena to make that happen.
You wonder why they need a new one in Bow. You know, they overblowed the public notice about that, I mean, the thing's been closed. You wonder why they really need a bridge if it's been closed so long. I mean, I, I understand you'd probably need one, but
But walking the neighborhood, I, I've walked that neighborhood, knocked on many doors in the neighborhood, some of the residents have been elated with that bridge being closed.
Yeah, no traffic.
Exactly.
Or versatile throughway for them.
Right, exactly, and so the thing is, there was a lot of happy residents over there with the bridge being closed.
Like Brian said, you need to meet the, a certain year store, I think it's, for there it's only fifty.
Fifty year.
But, you know, that's not that much to
Right.
Achieve.
Okay, so it's, answer your question, it's a work in progress.
Good.
Ken, do you have anything, anything else?
Yeah, I do, actually, yeah. Sitting on that side of desk, I never really noticed it till sitting on this side of the desk. When you guys are signing stuff, unless it's something real quick, can I suggest, is this, you know, to help speed up the process, is that anything that's gonna be lengthy, signing, issuing, and certifying and all that? You know, once you've done the meeting, you can take and do a half hour or whatever, just a bunch of cells, you know, without, you know, no business being transacted, except for signing. So that way, we don't just sit here and twiddle our thumbs while you guys are getting right as crap, trying to rush through it all.
So noted.
Just a suggestion.
So noted. Ken. Chief, you're late, we already signed your stuff.
That's the chief I didn't recognize.
I'm all set. And I, the thing is, so we got a question from a public asking about what, what, what we were buying for equipment, I could actually answer, tablets.
By the way, just for your information, we had a road accepted tonight, within the next few months or so, drive in and see what you think of that subdivision, including signage. You got anything else?
You talked about
Overlook.
Overlook.
Yeah. It's gonna be a while, but you know, take your, you know, every once in a while, it's
I, I drive through periodically.
Yeah, it's yours to patrol legally now, I mean
It is now, it is beyond the road.
Is it officially a public way, huh?
Yes.
All of it.
All of it. Ken is correct.
You can arrest everybody you want, and that you want.
All right, I'm gonna close the public comment now, and bring it back to the board.
Did you ask me to say anything?
Yes. He said it.
Okay.
Speed traffic.
Um, did you wanna bring up the
Uh, no, not in public, not, not at this time.
Oh.
I'm gonna bring it through you, Dan.
Okay, all right, um, I've already, you've already addressed the healthcare rates, that's what I had to bring forward, but I gave you a copy, so that's, and that's all I had.
Okay.
Um, other than the warrants been processed, and the tax bills will be mailed out by the, uh, October twenty-sixth.
Okay. Do you?
No, I'm
Which one?
Open for a motion bridge.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Wow.
You said it.
I said it. Sorry, I took